Right, members, settle down please. Thank you. Welcome to yourselves and to anybody who's watching live, the live stream, and to this full council meeting. And without further ado, I shall move on, just to ask you if you've got your mobile phones. Could you turn them off, as I haven't, too silent or too vibrate or whatever it is that you do with it? Right, thank you. Okay, move straight on. Item one, apologies.
councillor Arora working.
councillor Arora, thank you. Is there any else that we know of? Councillor Heavington was coming.
She was coming, but I think she might be.
She might be late. Okay, thank you. Is there any declarations of interest on the items?
I, this, sorry, I think, sorry, I haven't had a chance to go through everything because of issues at home, but the carnival, I sit on the board of the Ramsgate Carnival.
Okay, so you declare an interest in that item. Thank you ever so much.
Sorry, I couldn't get that out.
No, no, that's all right. All right. At this point, I'd just like to advise members that I have proposing to change the order of the items, and that is to change item seven, no, sorry, to change item 10 to basically to item eight. And the reason that I've done that is to ensure that it's before the finance and budget item, in case members decide to act positively on in relation to the East Cliff lift. So if members agree to that, all agree. Thank you very much.
They can take one day, so that's variation.
That's the variation. Okay. Moving swiftly on to item three. Public participation, public request to speak. I don't believe we've got any. No, and I think the same goes forward unless any district councillor here has anything they would like to report to RTC. No, thank you.
Worth us mentioning, Chair, excuse me, I should have. Worth us mentioning that we did have a briefing about the proposals for the port just this week, and more of that information will be coming out early soon.
Yes, by all means.
For people who may be tuning into it, we are aware that the briefing was given.
If you'd like to do that, councillor Piper, if you want to, then talk.
No, I wasn't proposing to bring a briefing, but just to note that it is coming. So members of the Ramsgate public will know that it is on the table and it is being discussed.
I think it would be better to have the report to RTC following the cabinet.
Yes, there is a cabinet paper on the website.
Next week. And the cabinet, as councillor Austin has said, the cabinet paper is on the, is on TDC website.
Yes.
People to watch. That's agree.
Is it intended to be consulted or is it just being handed down?
As far as I am aware, there's no consultation. It's going, it's a cabinet decision. So they will take that. Obviously, well, personally, I'm, I'm various of us who are double haters will go along and speak on it because I think there's several issues that we think that should be altered. But, you know, I don't want to get into that now, but I think, councillor Young.
I'm just wondering if we've had a reply yet from Southern Water to our questions.
Not as far as I'm aware, councillor Young. Sorry to be able to tell you that. Report from county councils. We haven't got any county councils here, so that goes by the by. Right, move on to item four, minutes of council meeting. And members, this is to approve the minutes of the meeting of the council held on the 25th of January 2023. Has anybody got any comment?
Proposal.
Proposed, seconda for the minutes, councillor Green. All in favour? Thank you. None against? Thank you very much. Number five, item five is, excuse me, policy and procedure to consider and adopt a private policy. Excuse me. A private policy and accessibility statement.
Okay.
Pass over to the deputy town clerk.
Dean has created these. Did you want to speak on them, Dean, or?
I can give brief over to you both.
Do you like that?
That'd be great.
So I'll start with the privacy policy. So every website has a privacy policy and by what we hold or information that we hold. We already have one on the website, but this is one that will inform us and bring us up to date. The ICO, the Information and Commissions Office, so it's just using a template and adapting to that. The accessibility statement has been done, that is on the website as well. It's just been reviewed and updated, and that's been used by, I think, the government template. So it's got a bit more information in there about what we need to kind of adapt and do to help visualize and audio weight. And with that has come a 43-page report of an analysis reviewed on site. Some of the things are quite simplistic to fit, like contrast issues and text. People who have audio systems, it's really web file. It's all detailed in there and we can possibly if we can then remove and get those included.
Thanks, Dean. Members, any comments? In that case, oh, sorry.
Can we thank Dean for?
Absolutely, I was about to do that, but you, by all means, do it, councillor Austin. Thank you, Dean. Good, councillor Austin. So, members, I recommend that we fully support this and approve it. So can I have a second for that, if this one? Councillor Heavington, all in favour, please show. Thank you, that's agreed. Item six is representative on outside bodies, and deputy town clerk will briefly on that.
We need to bring this to council. It's a very simple process. Councillor Crittenden is currently the council's representative on the outside body for the Clockhouse Focus Group. Due to other commitments, councillor Crittenden feels unable to give the group the time and commitment required, and councillor Ovidon has offered to take on the role. So council is asked to approve councillor Tony Ovidon as the new RTC representative on the Clockhouse Focus Group until the end of the council term in May.
Thank you. Proposed?
I propose.
Got to say something.
If you want to.
Only after we vote you in.
Yeah, not the first meeting, we'll be providing, but I'm sure everybody have done my country.
I know you. Thank you, Tony. Right, all in favour, please show. Thank you. Oh, that's carried for that one. There's one more.
One more. Members, I sent you an email with reference to the Ramsgate Design Awards Judging Panel. This is something that you agreed in December to work with the Ramsgate Society to host the awards in 2023. This is to be on that panel and to judge, do the judging. It will be approximately three meetings, that's all. I've had one taker, which was councillor Albon.
I just chucked my hat in the ring and just said, I'd be to do it, but if anybody else wants to do it, then I will.
Yeah, and we need a council resolution to just to tick the box to have that.
Let me go Tuesday, but I was going to propose.
No, 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 no. I just stuck my name down. I just thought I'll respond to.
That's all for me.
I mean, but if councillor Heavington, yeah, whoever.
I don't want to deprive you, councillor.
Oh, no. Please do.
Disappointed, though.
Please do.
Yeah, that's one.
Okay, so seconda? Anybody else want to stick their hands up for it? No?
Just one councillor.
You want your hands on the table.
You attend, you attend meetings and there's three meetings a year, and you would be judging along with others from the Ramsgate Society as to the best designs of buildings and issues of touch.
Would that be in Mountgate or?
No, it's Ramsgate, fully Ramsgate, fully Ramsgate. You would like to put yourself forward? Okay, do we have a second for councillor Young? Okay, Linda Piper? I mean, how do you want to?
How many do we need? Just the one?
Just the one.
They're asking for one, but I could, I.
They can take two.
I was going to say, exactly.
I think that would be easiest way, and then we can work that out from there. Yeah.
No one wanted to do it. What happened? Half the town councils wanted to do it.
Thank you, Chair, and to both of you, thank you very much for being willing to do that.
You want to do it, do it. Is that what you're saying?
No, I was just thinking, it might be a good idea to have a representative on that, but to have a second one.
A reserve.
With that one, in case, for example, in case you are unwell, then Barbara is up to speed with all the details for the next meeting, so that we kind of have a member in a reserve.
I think that's a good idea. Yeah, so we'll take a vote on, just take a vote on both. All right, all those in favour, please show. Thank you very much. Excellent. So we've done that. Okay, item seven is funding and grants. And I'll pass you over to deputy town clerk, who will go through the various items.
This report covers three financial years, so bear with me. The first one is from the Rams, it's a previous allocation. They have the money. It's East Kent Men Cap, Ramsgate Hub. It's from 2021-22, and they were awarded £3,500. Fund introductory taster sessions to develop a new integrated service in Ramsgate for adults with learning disabilities and with complex needs. They came back to council asking for an extension because they were struggling to actually recruit somebody, et cetera. They basically have come back again to say, unfortunately, they are not able to go forward with this project. So they're asking if we can allow, you know, put a resolution to allow them to change the project. It's just as short as the money that you've awarded, just tiny amount. So they want to use it, this does fit with the Ramsgate fund actually, because it's capital items, to replace some worn-out furniture to spruce up the hub. And they want to invest in good quality, robust items that will last for many years. This includes a clean, an easy clean sofa for social area, chairs with arms that are easier for people to sit in and get out of, new work tables that can be folded away, a recliner. And the total expenditure is £3,456, so it's just a few pounds short. So it's entirely up to council if you wish to award that change. Thank you.
That's great.
Yeah, this application, as the deputy town clerk has said, is from the Ramsgate Fund. It's for the Ramsgate Fund in 2022-23 financial year. This one and one of the other applications, the one from Ramsgate Bowls Club, could both be from the last year's Ramsgate Fund. So we do have the money in the budget head. They're both for £3,500. I would suggest I'd propose that we give Men Cap the full amount, £3,500.
Sorry, councillor, they've actually had the money. They've had £3,500 from budget year 21-22. So they struggled to achieve what they wanted to do, and they've come back to us to ask for to be able to use the money in a different way. So that money's gone.
Yeah.
Permission to use it elsewhere.
Seconda?
No, I was actually wanting to speak.
Okay, sorry. No, no.
I just wanted to comment that this, what is being proposed to use the money for is so vastly different than the original project. I'm not overly happy with it, however, because it is last year's budget, and they've already got the money, I am inclined to agree with it, which is, I just wanted to make that point.
Councillor Heavington?
I would agree with councillor Crittenden. I mean, I was very enthusiastic about the programme they were putting in place, which was going to help adults with learning disabilities and complex needs. I mean, yes, I appreciate that they need new furniture, and that always is going to improve the hub. And I mean, yes, I'm going to say yes, but it is disappointing that it's not going for what it was doing.
I agree.
Which is what we need.
Okay, we've got a proposal for it. Do we have a seconda, please? Councillor Piper? Okay, all in favour? Show. Thank you, that's carried. Next one?
The next one is a previous allocation. They haven't had the money. It's £3,500 to Ramsgate Bowls Club. This was awarded to part fund a single-story extension to the Bowls Pavilion with the caveat that evidence of funding from other sources is provided, and how much that was councillor's decision. I've now received information from them that they are receiving some money. They've received £1,000 from KCC. They've received from crowdfunding £5,150. They're expecting memberships fees of £910 by the end of March. And for winter short mat fees at £1,210 is due in October, which is a total of £8,270. They also have a bank balance as detailed in my report there. And I'm asking council, are you happy for me to release the £3,500 to the club, which has already been allocated? Thank you.
I agree with that. We all agree? Thank you.
And I put councillor Piper down as proposing. And councillor Albon as a seconda. Thank you.
If you let me ask a question now, Chair, as we move on to the next one.
Too late.
Please forget my interest, my ignorance. I'm just wondering whether I need to declare an interest here, because I'm getting old. Is there a difference between the Ramsgate Bowls Club and the Thanet Bowls Club?
They are.
On to the next one.
They are different.
I might need to start playing soon. I'm getting old.
They are, they are different applicants.
Thank you, yeah. Just teasing.
So we're now moving into the 22-23 budget. Sorry, yes, still in the 22-23 budget. Thanet Bowls Club, they're asking for £5,000. The balance of this budget at the moment from this year's is just over £5,000. So these are asking for £5,000 for funding towards a replacement mower for the bowling green. They are stating, when we took over the maintenance of the Bowls Green from TDC around 12 years ago, TDC left the existing greens mower for our use. This mower has now stopped working and is beyond repair. The bowling green is central to the existence of the club, and a suitable size and quality of the mower is essential. Within their application, they have all the detail. Council to decide if you wish to fund this and to what amount, simply.
I have a second question. This is for the 22?
This is for the current financial year.
How much, how much have we got?
£5,069.
Sorry, councillor Crittenden, thanks.
I wanted to make a comment more than anything here. They've had it 12 years. It was already second-hand when they got it. They would have thought that they should have been preparing and planning for its ultimate demise. And so I'm disappointed that they would not have done that and would be now seeking funding for it.
Councillor Nixey?
First of all, can I just ask where it is? So the Thanet Bowls Club is different from the Ramsgate Bowls Club. So I mean, how much of Ramsgate is Thanet Bowls Club? Sorry? Government taken. Where's the other one?
Montefiore.
And just to clarify, because I'm all at sea with regards to which year, which fund, how much we've got left. I've got this lovely date order. Thank you very much for doing that.
That's coming later.
Of course, yes. But with this, money's two. Is this just for this year, and then that's it? This is later?
This, what you're looking at at the moment is the Ramsgate Fund for this financial year. What is left is £5,069. They're applying for £5,000. It's costing them just over £10. And these are in Montefiore Avenue.
Right.
And this is the only application we have.
That's a pound for a.
That's my third point. Sorry, it was like £5,000 for a lawn mower.
£10,000 is what they're actually attempting.
Who was next? Councillor?
Just to ask, have we got any other applications for this?
I had one come in, which I have moved into the new financial year, which is the Miss Ramsgate Organisation. It's entirely up to you. You can award from, and a third one, I've got a RF2 for next year, next financial year as well.
This is the only one.
This is the only one that I've put into that financial year.
Given this is a capital thing rather than an event, I thought we were limited to £3,069.
£3,500, yeah.
So it's above that anyway. I mean, I have to say, having spent my entire younger life playing hockey on grass pitches before the modern lot arrived, machinery is really expensive. And my experience of clubs that basically struggle to survive is you can't, although you want to plan for stuff like this, you just can't because you're running, you run entirely on volunteers. And if you haven't got a bar that gives you a revenue and lots of players that drink and eat, then you're stuffed. So I do understand why they haven't managed to raise this money. And it's not just any old lawn mower. It's probably got a cutting and a rolling bit, a bit like cricketers would use. I don't understand cricket because they grow this grass and then they have a concrete base actually, because they mow it to within an inch of the life. But I, it's, it won't be a standard lawn mower. It will be a, something special. So I do, you know, and it will, it will cost that much.
Well, I think, I think I was, my question, I would also like to know what lawn mower it is, because I'm thinking we buy lawn mowers. So it's for our technicians, you know, I mean, is there not something that we can do with regards to, we either get one at a trade rate discount for them, or we give them one of ours if they're in desperate need, or. But I mean, there's got to be an alternative, hasn't there, to this, because I just think that's really steep. I can't imagine us spending £5,000.
I don't know. The short answer.
Okay, within, within the application, they've actually stated that it, and I have no idea, but this is a Dennis FT 610.
Explains a lot.
£4,869. Ten-blade cylinder cassette at £1,233, a two-millimetre scarrifier cassette at £1,057, and a verticata at £1,197.
So it's not, it's not just a mower? Councillor Piper, is your hand up? Councillor Piper's come.
Obviously, this is really important to them. £5,000 is a lot of money. Can we give them four?
And we are limited.
No, we're limited to three and a half.
Well, let's give them that then.
Councillor Crittenden?
I think all I wanted to say was I completely understand what councillor Wing is saying about that. I mean, we're talking about bowls here, and I've assumed that the ground needs to be high quality, and we can't just fumble along with our push and shove or whatever. And so I do understand that. I think, having made my point about the 12 years to save up for it, I am still inclined to actually approve it, but.
Can I just, can I just point out to members, and I think you should take this into account, is that they've notified us that their bank balance is 73 down.
Oh, it's a different. It's a different.
Thanet's online. The whole of Ramsgate has witnessed this.
Gentlemen, that's exactly what Eamonn Holmes did to his colleague this morning.
Oh, did he? Okay, thank you. I'm glad that that's the case then. Councillor Young?
I'm just wondering what their, you know, what their bank balance is like.
The other club did.
We had that.
Oh, she read the wrong thing then.
Find that information out?
Okay, so their accounts.
Is there some way they could use a mower between these different cups?
They have, according to this, £2,000.
Okay. I think, three and a half. Is everybody, pardon, sound a bit all in favour of that?
They'll be coming back for another 12 years anyway.
Okay, so we've still got £1,569 left in that budget?
In the current.
Request a ride on this mower?
Yes.
We should invite them to hold the Ramsgate Town Council open challenge.
Put it in the carnival. Dress it up and put it in the carnival. Facing events, mower rides.
Mower rides.
Get the mayor in charge.
Okay, members, settle down. Thank you. All right, next one?
Next one.
Please?
Ramsgate Fund again. I have put this into the next budget, budget, next year's budget. But you have £1,500 left from last year, so you can, you can use that as well. Miss Ramsgate Organisation, their projected expenditure is £5,045. They're asking for £5,000. They are aware that £3,500 is on maximum. The last award was £2,750. It's an application for funding towards closing for the Miss Ramsgate Court, for building and decorating the Ramsgate Carnival float, and running costs for the Ramsgate Court for the year. And I believe members are aware that the couples that look after the court actually use their own money if they don't have any, any funding coming forward. Thank you.
Members, councillor Crittenden?
Yeah, can I just double check? You did say that this is also limited to the £3,500. It's the Ramsgate Fund and application. Does that apply to all of the others as we go through with all the? Only the Ramsgate Fund applications. Events Fund is to your, at your version. Right, okay.
Councillor Piper?
Perhaps through you, Chair, if I could ask councillor Green whether it's allowed or not, could we grant them £1,500 left over from last year's budget and £3,500 from the coming budget, giving them the total of £5,000, but not breaching any £3,500 application limit? Make it two separate applications?
I think we could, yes.
Just wondering if we can do that financially without
We probably could.
Breaking the rules. If so, I wonder if we could explore that as a.
Can I speak on that? They were awarded money from the previous year. With the Ramsgate Fund, it's one application per applicant. So they've already had money from the last budget, hence I've put it into the new budget. Thank you.
Councillor Crittenden, you have?
Sorry, no, I kind of changed my mind.
Okay.
Ditto.
Rintzen?
Yeah, ditto, because I didn't want to offer them as much as that. That's sort of the whole problem.
Councillor Nixey?
So they've got an events funding application coming up as well, so they're getting both. So basically, we'd be giving them £7,500.
Yeah, but it's out of two budgets, obviously.
I agree, but I mean.
It's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money, and I, and we try to scale back for everybody, don't we? And so I would really want to be scaling back this too. Also, if they know, I mean, God, you know, we give them money every single year. If they know that £3,500 is the maximum, then why would you even request to grant £5,000? It just doesn't make sense, because it's not like the first time they've done this, is it?
Correct. That's great.
We gave them £2,750 last year.
£750, yeah.
£2,000.
£2,750 last year. And they seem to cope.
Oh, well with that.
So could I propose that we give them £3,000?
I'll second that.
Proposal, certainly, councillor Piper? Any other comments? Councillor Wing?
I've just, I've looked at their, the bit that we added over environmental and recycling. So I was hoping to see something con clothing. I mean, they mentioned a great deal about food events, but their application is actually about purchasing clothing. So it'd be interesting to know in terms of, do they, do they try to repurpose the clothing from? So I, it'd be interesting to know, uh, in terms of, do they, do they try to repurpose the clothing from the previous year? Uh, are they buying their products from our fabulous haberdashery on the street? Uh, I, 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 and maybe it's advice we give them for next time they put this application in. But it would be, it would have been nice to have seen whether they actually try and repurpose stuff they had from last year, whether they're buying locally, uh, whether they're using local sewers. I mean, they probably, I would imagine they, they do a lot of making themselves, but would be nice to have seen that on there actually in relation to what they're actually applying for. I mean, they mentioned a great deal about foods and, and waste, which has got nothing to do with the application, so. I think because we've put that in, we, we maybe need to, if, uh, clubs that apply, organisations that apply for us a bit more advice going back, going forward. Uh, because it would be nice to think that they, they buy everything and use local, local makers.
Thank you for that, but unfortunately we've, we've got to deal with what we got. Um.
Emery? Well, I just think, you know, just to go on to like, four years have been funding this in both the events and everything else. And every single time, we talk about things that we'd like to move into the twenty-first century. And it always comes up that it would be nice if they came in and actually talked about it, explained things. All I've seen for four years is us giving the money increasing as it, as it seems to be at the moment. And it just going on handbags, shoes and gloves and this, that and the other. And I understand entirely the, the premise behind it and the opportunities for young people, which is why I've always voted for it. But I just think we've never actually met the people, we've never changed anything, we're just putting money to something where, again, if we wanted to change it, we need to start making differences. We need to say, you know, about sustainability or about, you know, recycling or something like that. There is no evolvement in this unfortunately. And, and for the first year, I'm inclined to, to, to disagree with this because I, I, I haven't seen anything from them with regards to our, our questions that we've asked previously.
Uh, Councillor Moore?
Uh, yes, it's something councillor Wing said about repurpose their clothes. Well, yeah, they might not all have the same size.
Uh, well.
Because they get new ones every year.
I understand that, which is why I asked the question, yeah.
There's new que- there's a new queen every year, a new deputy queen and princesses.
Handbags don't change.
And jewellery doesn't change.
No, handbags, yeah. There is that, that they could, them, but then again, do, do they go with the rest of the clothes that they're wearing? I do agree that they should come in and talk to us about it and discuss it.
Yes.
But I think we should give them the money.
Emery?
Well, every year I put the subject up and I'm, the whole ethos of actually having a Miss Ramsgate. Um, and, you know, I can remember Pete Camp.
I did see Peter Camp's second part every time.
So going back to those happy days, so I'm just going to bring this up again. I mean, if these, there are less and less of these carnival princes, as every year we have less other, um, towns, um, involved in this, in these floats. And I do think there's something different we could do. This is a very old fashioned concept.
I don't disagree, however.
It's a bit sexy.
Um, Helen?
Uh, yeah, I'm picking up, I agree with councillor Wing and councillor Nixie of what's been said. I just feel that this has become a rolling funding programme to, to some extent. Um, I also am quite mindful of the article that was published in the Community Ad Magazine um, last month from one of the, um, the court members about how she felt that she had benefited and, uh, you know, on a personal level. And so I am quite, and I appreciate it is an old fashioned, um, concept and, and maybe who knows how long it will go on for. But in that sense, I, I have a, a sense of wanting to support it. But I do think we need to, really do need to pick up on what councillor Wing and councillor Nixie said about doing some follow-up before we get the next rolling programme request. Um, and I would be inclined to, to maybe go at two and a half thousand rather than, um, than what's on.
Councillor Green?
Uh, yeah, anybody that's been town mayor is fully aware of this. They are out there, uh, two or three times a month advertising Ramsgate to, to the local towns and villages. Um, and, and they support other events in the town also. And they are popular, whether we like it or not. They are very popular. Now, if they're going to be out there advertising the town, which is what they use this float for, uh, they're going to need support. Either we support it as a town or we don't.
I, I mean, I'm conflicted because I've seen, I've seen the really positive impact on two young people who became, uh, Miss Ramsgate or Miss Ramsgate's assistant. Uh, and it was, you know, they are put through quite a rigorous process that actually helps to build confidence. And it's not everybody that can put stuff on and go around representing. The bit I have, that I struggle with, so I fully support the whole process, but the bit I struggle with is the fact it's Miss Ramsgate. Apparently, boys can apply, but when, a boy is not going to become Miss Ramsgate. So I think somehow we, we have to fund it because I think it does have a positive impact. But we somehow have to help them move forward. I mean, maybe, maybe it becomes, uh, Ramsgate ambassador so that, so that, you know, any, any young person, regardless of who they are, can actually benefit from this. Because it seems to me there are lots of boys that lacking confidence and would benefit from this whole thing, but they are not going to apply to be Miss Ramsgate.
I've got two more speakers and I'm cutting that off now.
So, and I agree with what councillor Green says, everybody, I mean, I, I understand the, the, the basis of, of helping young people. I mean, that's what I do in my day-to-day work and I'm absolutely for that. But you've got to remember that we've, we as a council have declared climate emergency and so on and so forth. So if these people are going out sort of like representing Ramsgate, which is fantastic, why aren't they representing sustainable Ramsgate, all the things that we aspire to as a council? So I'm not, yeah, I'm all for it and I, and I want them to be well represented in this, but there is, that's what I'm saying. So moving it forward in this day and age of where we are going with the ethos of where this council is. So I'm not anti the whole thing, it just needs to be brought up to date.
Yes.
Because an ambassador is an ambassador under a young one, even better, do you know what I mean? But let's start making changes.
Could I make a proposal?
Uh, no. Sorry, Councillor Piper? We've already got a proposal on the floor, so.
Say is, I'm quite happy to try and work with the group to see if we can move forward.
If you're hung fire a minute, let councillor Piper speak and then, I beg, I didn't mean it.
Thank, thank you, Chair. Actually, I, I just want to endorse what councillor Green said. And I'm someone who's been very fortunate as chairman of Sandown District Council for two years. I've been all over the county seeing our team representing us as a town. Um, and they work extremely hard, extremely long hours and a lot of travelling. Uh, it is, uh, in that sense, an old fashioned concept, but so is the mayor of Ramsgate.
Indeed.
Old fashioned appointment and I don't see us clamouring to try and get rid of that or bring it up to date. We still have a mayoral budget, um, which the mayor uses to the very best of her ability at the moment. I, I think this is such a tiny amount of money and the benefit that comes back to us. And I would encourage all councillors, if you can, go and see them in action somewhere, not just Ramsgate. Go somewhere and see them and see what they're doing. They're a fantastic advert for our town. This is such a small amount of money. I'd like to second councillor Green's proposal. We give them as much as we can. I think it was three thousand with councillor Green. I think we should give it to them. I note on their description, a considerable amount of the money is going to be spent designing and redoing the float. Well, that's a, a major expense, which a voluntary sort of organisation like this, they can't pluck the money out of their back pockets. I, I think we give it to them and give it to them with a smile. And, uh, and, uh, you know, if there's going to be any movement to away from the, if you'll pardon the expression, the feminine aspect of this, then that'll come, but probably like after.
Okay, thank you councillor Piper. Um, what I would suggest to members uh, is that, um, I'm quite happy to take the issue away about talking to them, uh, seeing how things are going to move with them, with the town clerk or deputy town clerk, depending on circumstances. And, and to ask them to come in and have a chat with us, uh, probably at the end of the season. So, you know, don't interrupt them, and, and, and if members are happy with that, we'll do that. Um, so we, we have a motion on the floor to, to give them three thousand pounds and that's been seconded. So we need to vote on that. So all in favour, please show. That's carried, thank you.
I'm just saying if you don't.
No, okay, thank you. Next one?
Next one, uh. The next one, they have requested fifteen thousand. I have gone back to them and advised that three and a half thousand is the maximum they can receive. But I would bring this forward to you anyway, so you are still restricted to three and a half thousand. This is from Stage Door Arts C I C. The application is for funding towards a three months deposit and three months rent for relocation to a new premises in the town centre for a dance studio, cafe and community space, which currently houses a number of community events. The applicant states that the premises we are currently in have been sold and are to be knocked down to accommodate flats. By moving into the town, into the centre of town, we will be able to keep our dance academy running, open our cafe for longer hours for the benefit of the people of Ramsgate who use the town centre, host and facilitate more community groups and usage of our space. We plan to pay our deposit and get ahead with our rent in order to have time to do the work needed to transform the space into usable community space. We currently have over five hundred students on the roll with our academy and with a larger space, we can accommodate at least double that. Our other activities currently attract over nine hundred participants. Our cafe can be used by all of Ramsgate's residents and our community space and groups currently serve up to six hundred people. This can also increase and has no limit. Um, council to decide, thank you.
Members, Councillor Green?
Do you know, are they not for profit?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, yes. They've already got a fundraiser, haven't they?
They've got a.
Fundraising, yes, crowdfunding, yes, they have.
Anybody else? Great.
That's fine.
Sorry.
So, it's the bank on the corner.
Yes.
Which I think is quite important.
It really puts.
H F C, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
And they're relocating, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wondered where the premises were.
Councillor Green?
I'm just a little concerned at how much we're robbing Peter to pay Paul and taking money out of next council's budget. This is the second one.
That's the pub.
They're having a row.
Just in case.
Oh, oh, it's, it's, oh, it's, um. Don't be. Um, we should carry on.
Council does not have to look at these applications now, you can leave them. Uh, but obviously it'll be for the new council, um, but as it will be their budget. And council has the right to decide whether to continue looking at the next budget.
Councillor Piper?
I, I, I wouldn't wish to suggest for one second, they haven't done all their homework, I bet they have. Um, I, I'm just wondering if, uh, anybody has taken over the empty dance studio which is in Rambley, was occupied by a dance school for many, many years, but I know the lady is now retired. And the business was empty, the building was empty last time I looked and it's got stage, changing rooms, dancing hall. Um, as you come, uh, where Iceland Car Park is, if, if that is on your left and you're walking towards Rambley High Street, you cross the road and it's that.
Oh, there is one, yeah.
And I'm not aware that it's occupied, but presumably they've done their homework and had a look at it.
Well, I imagine.
But I'm just not sure, uh, you know, are they going to be able to raise significant funds of money to do the thing that they are proposing? And that's what I don't know, so I would think, well, let's have a deeper look at this and bring it back later.
You're proposing that, councillor Piper?
Well, just a suggestion, at this stage, it may be that.
David was before me.
Oh, sorry, David.
Um, well, if that's a proposal, then what I was going to say doesn't, I need to wait.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think we're, although I fully support the group, I think we're sailing close to the wind because we're not funding events, we're funding rent. Now, if they'd have applied for fifteen thousand to run a whole series, series of events, then I think I, I, I would see this in a different light, but I think we are going to put ourselves in a very difficult situation if we are going to fund rent. Uh, and I, and, and rent is not an event and it's not capital either. So I don't know, I don't see how we can actually fund this. So if you, the, a similar organisation would have been, uh, Citizens Advice, we're not paying their rent, we're paying for a member of staff.
Can you suspend the meeting for me, please?
Yeah, we just suspended a meeting for a. Uh, yes, so let's continue, members, and apologise for, uh, residents who, who are watching this. Unfortunately, uh, something had to be sorted, sorted out, so we're now going to carry on with the meeting. Councillor Piper?
Thank you, Chair. Just, um, I was making a suggestion, but waiting to hear what others had to say. Can I formally make that a proposal then?
Yeah.
Uh, that we put this off and come back at a later time, but paying particular attention, if I may, to councillor Wing's comments about funding rent.
Yeah.
That's one of the issues I'm really not sure about, because if they get short of rent money in the future, where does that leave us if we don't?
Or other people?
Um, so the proposal then would be to put it off and look at it again when we perhaps got some more information.
Um, yeah.
Hang on, hang on a minute.
Um, yeah, councillors, I, I was aware that this probably doesn't fit within the remit, but it's not my decision to not bring it here, so that's why it's come before you.
Councillor Green, did, did you want to say anything?
No, I think I've done that.
Councillor Green?
Well, it doesn't matter.
Comment on the motion. There is, there is precedent for us doing this out of the Ramsgate Fund. I mean, for instance, for example, the, uh, the art barge, Springsteen, where we gave them a thousand pounds towards their startup fund and, and this seems to me to be a similar sort of thing that they're asking for. Also, we have in the past told people they can have our donation when they completed their fundraiser. Um, so.
Okay.
So we can get round this.
Yeah.
Both of the objections to it.
Okay, well, let's, let's get a vote goes.
We gave the art barge a thousand pounds because it was a startup and risky and whatever, but we felt it was worth encouraging.
Yeah.
Now, I think if this is successful, it will be a, a good thing for the town. Something that we would probably want to support. So if this motion fails, I'll be proposing the thousand pounds.
Uh.
I may be wrong, but I think the arts barge got its money for P P E equipment to help volunteers volunteer on the, on the vessel.
That was the second one.
Councillor Green?
I would like to second councillor Piper's motion because I am concerned that if we're offering the maximum.
Got you down as seconded?
Um, then that is.
Um, then that is a big shortfall on what they're actually asking for. So I, I think coming back with more information is essential.
Okay, that's Rusty.
Um, in light of the fact that we've got fifteen hundred pounds left camp, to be carried over from, um, the previous year under the Ramsgate Fund, I wonder if. Following, uh, councillor Green's idea of, uh, a bit of seed money to start up, we could actually offer them back. Temporarily for now and then ask them to come back if they've got more detail later, once they've raised money.
Yeah.
Okay, can I, sorry, uh, we've got a motion on the floor, so I think it would be ideal to deal with that. And then if it falls, then we can, yeah, open up the discussion again. So, uh, the, the, um. Motion is to defer this item.
Yeah.
To, uh, the next meeting or?
I would, I would say.
Later than that.
I would say to, into the new financial year.
To new financial year, okay.
Effectively, Chair, we'll meet the new council.
New council, yeah, fair enough. No, well, it's April.
April.
April, yeah, whatever you want in April. So can I ask you, uh, all in favour of the?
Chair, could, I mean, what are we hoping to learn from?
A business plan.
I don't know.
How they're gonna find the extra twelve grand that they're short on.
Yeah.
Why aren't they looking at the other site that councillor Piper mentioned? Or have they looked at?
Crowdfunding, Helen, aren't they? They're doing quite a bit of crowdfunding actually.
I mean, they, they've, they've already picked a site.
Yeah, we can't tell them what to.
We can't tell them. Start up or not start up, um.
They should be done with the old building, that building.
So we've got, we've got a motion that we've got to deal with. So can we have that, and, and that is. To, uh, defer till, till the new financial year. Uh, all those in favour, please show. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. All those against. Two, three, four. So that's carried. Thank you. Defer.
Um, we are now moving to the events fund budget. You would normally look at these, um, early in the year anyway, so we're not doing anything different than we would normally. What I've pro- print, uh, created for you is a day tour for these applications. Um, which might make it easy, I don't know if it will or not, um. But bear in mind, members, you only have thirty four thousand pounds. Um, that was the allocation with the new, new, um, budget. The total funding applied for is over thirty nine thousand. And that is so far this year. So I don't know if you want to go through them all or some of them. Councillor Green might want, have an idea.
Sorry, I came in a bit late and I just need to say that I'm on the board for Ramsgate through the Census and the Festival of Sound, so. Shall I go out of the room?
Uh, you'd be all right.
We're not, we can't vote.
Finance, yeah.
Yeah.
We can't vote on those ones. I can't vote.
That's correct, then.
I just want to say I'm so concerned at how much money we're being asked to consider today. That is out of next year's budget. Which is not only just next year's budget, it's the next council's budget. I appreciate that most of us in the room hope to get re-elected. This is still the next council that we are tying up.
Yes.
And did you say it came to thirty nine? Cause I totted it up as forty three, but. Oh, well, that's my adding up there and I, I did it in my head, but I came to forty three. And how much is in the total fund for the whole? Thirty four thousand for the whole. Yeah, we're asking to commit, any, any potentially commit.
Third.
Whole, the whole budget for next year. Members who spent by August. It's quite normal to, to, um, to consider these. Prior to the new budget because of the timings for people to get the applications to T D C. So what you're doing isn't abnormal. However, like you say, it could be a new council, councillor Green.
Councillor Green.
I mean, four of these take place before May.
Hmm, yes, I, well, I saw, so I didn't.
Given how long people have to warn D C.
Hmm.
They're doing an event. They're gonna need to leave now, otherwise it won't be of any use to them.
Still spending, how much is the total budget for next year? Thirty four. So it's more than. Comes to more than the entirety of next year's budget, potentially. Absolutely. A lot of these are applying for more than they would, would have before. Um, cost of things, et cetera. Having looked through them, actually, I think they're all supportable. But I'm just concerned at. How we're budgeting. Next year.
We don't have to give them the full amount, do we?
Yeah, I appreciate that and, and, or we can't. If we're gonna run out of money before we even get to April.
Okay, I mean, uh, uh, how do you wanna deal with this? Do you want to take each one, one by one? Which seems sensible thing to do, um. And do, do you wanna go?
Yeah.
Start, let's all start the process.
Go, council can decide at any time if you, if you want to shell this for a little while. So your first one is, um, and this is the day tour that I'm doing for you, is E F one. Uh, which is the Miss Ramsgate Organisation, they're asking for two and a half thousand. Um, this is for the selection dance and Ramsgate Carnival Dance taking place in March and the end of July. Um. Basically, I, I think most members know that they have their selection dance where they, they choose the court. And the carnival dance is where, um, the courts from all over Kent. Come to the carnival and then they have a dance afterwards to, um, entertain them, et cetera. Thank you.
Members, that's great.
We gave them three thousand five hundred last year. I'm a bit miffed about the selection dance, cause I understand they're planning to hold it outside of Ramsgate.
Ah.
Okay.
In the pit. I thought it was in Manchester. Uh. And certainly, th- these are closed events and, and otherwise they're not open, as I understand it, to the general public.
Hmm.
Um, so I'm not so happy about supporting this to any great extent. I'm not gonna make a proposal though.
Catch, correct, then.
I just want to point out, there's more handbags in here.
Cashable.
Dance bags.
Cashable.
Yes, uh. It, it may not be in Ramsgate, but is there anywhere in Ramsgate that could hold so many people?
Probably.
So that's might be why they have to go it out to where they've gone to.
But where did that go last year then?
Last year, they went, went to one of the.
Hotels?
Sorry?
Hotels?
No, it's.
Where is it there? Where is it? Where is it?
They're holding it at Manston Sports Social Club this year.
The old boat. Uh, old boat club, a small.
Small boat in this class.
Or small boat in this club.
Okay.
Quite a few, yeah.
But they wanna hold it at the Manston. Today, that's where they had the end of year last year, wasn't it? At the end of year dance there, cause our mayor never got invited.
Hmm.
Which, uh. Wasn't very happy about that at all, um.
We'll have to get Rufford House finished.
Well, you might get them all in there, that's for sure.
You've got all the fellows who, you've got all the.
Yeah.
That's the structure that would, would hold, hold them.
Yeah, that's a good.
I have to say, I have to say, members, that I, I'm not very happy about this at all. Um, so, um, to save anybody any embarrassment, I will. I will propose that we don't give them what they're asking for.
Are we going to give them anything?
No, that's what I just said. No, but it's up to you. I mean, I've made a proposal, but it's up to you guys, whether you. Agree with that or not. So I'm gonna take that to the vote, so all in favour? Those against? And that's carried.
Thank you. The next one is, um, E F three. Uh, which is the, sorry.
Through the census.
Ramsgate Through the Census C I C, uh, projected expenditure, uh, eight thousand six hundred seventy seven ninety. Grant requested three and a half thousand. Um, it's an application for funding towards the event Ramsgate Through the Census. Following on from the sex of, the success of our inaugural event in twenty two, we, we will produce a weekend of activities from. April the twenty first to the twenty third to coincide with Earth Day on April the twenty second, the theme of which is investing in our planet. Um, this will be, uh, workshops related to wellness, sustainable fashion, living, cooking for one or for a family on, on a. Recently, I've watched it, um. It's all about climate change, liv- living with, uh, as, as nosmia? I don't know what that is. Smell or taste disorders, stargazing, choir, singing, sea shanties, um. Foraging, aromatherapy. As with our first year, we will feature local chefs, businesses, venues such as Discovery, Planet. They're gonna use Radford House apparently, modern lingerie, uh, et cetera, et cetera. So there's, there's a lot going on. Um, jewellery, ceramics, pottery.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anne Marie.
I went to one of their events last year on this and it was outstanding. It's absolutely outstanding. It was ticketed event, so they do raise money themselves. But they did so much with regards to high-end type stuff. Um, really, um, prioritised local, uh, artists, artisans, um. You know, chefs and so and so called. Adrian Mole in particular was very good in donating all sorts of stuff. But a- as well as like working, um. Uh, what's that looking for? You know, with free events and all sorts of stuff, um, walking tours and everything. It was really across the board and it was brilliant. Everybody I spoke to was really impressed. So for a sort of first time event, it was incredible. I, I'd be happy to see this happen in Ramsgate again.
Thank you, councillor.
Can I say something, given I'm on, I can't say anything, like, can I? No, okay.
Sorry.
I totally agree with that.
Sorry.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, can we, can anybody explain ecstatic dancing?
Ecstatic dancing?
It's on the list.
Demonstrators.
You can, Lendo, you can take part.
Septy Towns, seventy Towns not missed that one out on the list.
Can you let?
Notice that.
I haven't got a clue.
Okay.
I was gonna wrong.
Be one of those welcoming the dorm type dances.
Ah, okay, so it's along the.
I'm thinking about it, I don't know. I mean, it's festival anyway, I'm not gonna say.
Okay, members, can we come back to the, the item? Um, so has anybody got any proposals, please? So they are asking for, uh, three thousand five hundred. Oh, sorry, Anne Marie.
Propose two thousand.
Two thousand.
Yep.
Two thousand five hundred.
I'd second that.
Seconded? All in favour? All in favour? Thank you. Any against? No, that's carried. Thank you.
Thank you, members. The next on the list is, um, E F seven, which is George's, uh, church. Uh, new app, new applicant, haven't applied to us at all before, um. The application is for funding towards a St George's Day Spring Parade. Saint, the St George's Day Spring Parade will gather outside St George's Church from twelve noon on Sunday, the twenty third of April, which is St George's Day. Participants in the parade will greet the congregation, um. As the St George's Day service ends, after which the parade will set off on a circuit, taking in the High Street and returning to St George's Church. The parade will feature, where you want some drumming band and an array of dragons, St George and Princess characters. Roses and some puppet horses. After the return to Broad Street, the drumming and dancing will continue. And rock choir will perform on the steps of the church, a pick. Uh, from St George's Hall, thank you.
Can I just ask?
Four, sorry.
Okay.
Seven thousand nine hundred and twenty one seventy six, projected expenditure ten thousand nine hundred and twenty one seventy six.
Um, can I just ask if it's the, the actual church that's applying?
It is, yes.
Are we allowed to give, cause, uh, church, man?
Uh, this is an event.
Oh, it's an event from the church.
Makes any difference who is in.
Okay, I'm just asking, I, I'm just aware of other churches who have, who've come to. Ask for assistance and we've not been able to give it to them, so, um.
I haven't, I have no knowledge of that.
You should do. I was one who bought it, and so, anyway, but never mind.
We've given money to church halls.
Yeah.
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 Okay. Fine, I just wanted to ask a question, that was all.
I think with it being an event and it's events fund, I think we're okay.
Councillor.
I, I propose that we give them, uh, three thousand five hundred, but we're allowed to give them, is that?
Um, that's the Ramsgate Fund limit with no amendment, it's at your discretion, it's at your discretion.
Unlimited.
Is it?
Well, it's limited to our budget anyway.
Four park figure, four thousand.
Okay, thank you. Councillor.
Um, a couple of things, um, I think this is probably the new. Events organiser who has been employed by the church.
That's Jemima.
Um, Jemima Brown that's probably put in this application. Um, so, uh, as ward councillors, we did meet with Jemima quite recently, um. So that she could introduce her, introduce herself to us in her new role. Um, so it is something that, that the church are moving into, is setting up a lot more. Um, events and, and things like that as part of the community. My only real question, however, is what are they actually spending it on? Yes, because, uh, unfortunately, despite the fact that I want to support something in my ward, um. I don't know, I don't know what's costing ten thousand, eleven thousand pound, of which I want eight. Yeah. It's within the application, councillor. I can read it out if you wish. That, I think that would help, yes. So you have band rehearsal and parade, one thousand seven hundred. Uh, seven prop and costume making workshops, um, three thousand four hundred and fifty. Materials, four hundred pounds. Production and project management, two thousand five hundred and fifty. First day, two hundred and fifty seventy six, which we all events have to provide. St George's Day Parade staff at seven hundred and fifty pounds. Other parade costs, uh, one thousand four hundred and twenty one. Marketing and communications, four hundred and, and that's totaling ten thousand nine hundred and twenty one seventy six.
Councillor Rusty.
We can't pay for staff, but that's a better thing to be sold on.
Yeah. That's Rusty.
When we, we decided how to go about this, I, I wanted to say at that stage, I wanted to propose at that stage. That we actually give, bearing in mind councillor Green's point about tying up the hands of, uh, the next council. I was going to suggest that we actually give two thousand pounds each to any of the immediate, um. Uh, applications that, that we approve and, um, and stick at that. Because of the, because otherwise we're going to end up spending much. Um, so, so my proposal would be two thousand pounds for this and two thousand pounds for any of the others that we approve, regardless.
Uh, well, I would hold you back on that because there's one that's only applying for seven hundred and fifty and one for five hundred.
I, I wasn't suggesting.
No, I'll just clarify. Councillor Piper.
Um, I wonder if I should have declared an interest on this. Um, to be fair, I can understand why a newly appointed events coordinator and so on within a. A church organisation would, would come in with a grand proposal like this, but. Listening to the list of things that the money's going to be spent on. In, in my experience of running churches, if you're going to do things like this in the community, you need to get. Those people from within the church to do the things that can be done by the church. This is a list of paying outside organisations, it seems to me, forgive me if I've misheard it. But it seems to me that this is a list of paying outside organisations to come in and do something on behalf of the church. I, if I, if I was the minister, I would be encouraging the church to do an awful lot of that themselves. So I, personally, I would struggle with. Uh, uh, awarding such an amount of funding, which seems to be something being done to the church rather than by the church.
Okay, fine. Uh, any other speakers? Oh, check, go for Barbara first.
Do you remember some time ago we, um, funded a steel band? To help, do you remember that?
Remember Steel Band?
Samba, you want a song?
Yeah, I'm just wondering why, you know, something like that would be good for the church.
It's in there, they've sent you.
Is that one name?
Yes, it's the same name.
So do they have to pay for that?
Yes.
That's great. That's great.
Could I just remind council that budget setting? Council in its wisdom cut the events funding from sixty K last year to thirty four K this year.
Hmm, I'd never have paid for it.
Bear that in mind.
Cast away.
Uh there's an motion to increase events budget, but that comes at another meeting, maybe maybe for the next council because having run an event, they have gone up. But I think if we worked on councillor Austin's principle of two thousand, I mean, I'm just looking at what they need. So if you look materials, first aid, uh I know some of the parade staff, if they're using the Samba band, which has got adults with learning disability, one of the things we discovered at the two events that I supported on is we needed specific people to support some of the adults with learning disability because they broke down and they wanted to be part of that group. Uh so we, I I know that's been, that decision has been made that when the Samba band runs, that there are some paid staff to support the adults with learning disability that wouldn't be able to last the whole event if they didn't have somebody to support them. But if you took that out, i- i- you, if we gave them two thousand, it would cover some of the things that we would normally cover. So cost of other parade cost, that there'll be a rolling road closure, there'll be uh insurance, there'll be the first aid costs. So I think if we gave them two thousand, then that would cover some of those costs.
Are you proposing that?
I would propose that, yes, yeah.
Do you have a second for that? Okay, members, all in favour, please show. Those against? That's carried, thank you.
Members, the next yeah, mission EF eight is from Newington Community Association, new application. Uh new applicant, sorry. Um this is the, for the Newington Coronation Celebration on the eighth of May this year. Projected expenditure is three thousand seven hundred and ninety, they are requesting that full amount, so that's three se- three thousand seven hundred and ninety. Um community events, uh they're going to run twelve community workshops in the six weeks prior to the final celebration. Um the uh Newington Community Gardener will work with young people to create designs with red, white and blue flowers in our raised planters. Creative workshops will focus on things such as crowns, flags, bunting and lanterns to decorate the event and to include as many people as possible. The community chef will work with a group of young people, design, prepare and serve a coronation lunch with a twist on traditional dishes. They will also prepare, cook and serve afternoon tea for up to twenty five Copperfields residents physically unable to attend the event, including home delivery to those unable to leave their flats. Um there's quite a lot going on there, thank you.
Um members, if I may be so bold um to take on board councillor Austin's point and of which you've just voted on the last one for, and I would suggest and propose that we put, that we would give the Newington Community Association two thousand pound, the Great Bucket and Spade Run, two thousand pound, Ramsgate Town Carnival, two thousand pound, we give the Ramsgate Bowling Club, seven fifty, we give Ramsgate Festival Sound, two thousand pound, and we give the Rotary Senate, two thousand, uh five hundred pound.
Seconded. Can I ask a second bit?
Question.
The only thing that I was also had in mind um completely, thank you for for your suggestion about the two thousand pound, was that um I might be a bit more mindful to support the new applicants um rather than just automatically do as you have said, but others may or may not agree with me.
No, indeed not. That's summary.
I love my call.
I fully support what you've said. I would just like, I mean, I know that the Ramsgate Festival of Sound, I know they're asking for ten thousand. I'm not suggesting we give them more if we're going on the premise of two thousand pounds, I understand that. Because I am mindful of other people coming later on in the year and needing money. However, with something like that, could we go back to them, see what other assistance we could give them? Because that's a big shortfall and I know they're really conscious of their funding. Whether it's Radford House or help from the technicians or something else where we could assist in a manner that's that that we could offer, just me, rather than just give them money, because I know that they're always short of.
By all means, by all means, we'll take that into account and I um we'll put that in a minute. We'll put that in a minute, yeah.
Could we not uh reconsider this about Newington? It is, they are a new applicant.
Yeah.
It's not that they come for it every year, they don't. And and this is something that's really special. And they're going to a lot of trouble for this, they're taking it over so many days and providing so many events that to give them a thousand down to three hundred and seventy nine. Not only that, it is a left behind community. It's even getting even more left behind with this, if we don't give them the full amount.
We can't be um, we can't be bullied into it, that's for sure.
I'm not bullying, I'm just.
No, 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 I'm saying for that, and and I think we need to bear bear in mind that um the reason that they never come to us is that they've always decided to be a bit separate because they didn't like it, they didn't like Ramsgate Town Council. But um I I've just proposed those as a way to, as a, as a way for it.
That should have been brought up, I really don't, they don't like Ramsgate Town Council. Have they told you this? Who's told you this?
What, we've been told? Right, members.
Asking the deputy town clerk if we've got low cash.
We have. Obviously, they've got money in the bank prior to possible community asset transfer, I believe.
Seventy one thousand.
That's a.
There's an explanation about it.
So two thousand isn't going to go on this, is it? I mean, it's up to members, you know, I've just, I've just put that forward. If you don't want to go with that, that's fine, I haven't got a problem with it.
Okay, second it.
I'm just trying to.
I seconded it.
I'm just trying to.
Apologies.
I'm just trying to move things on, council, otherwise we'd be here all night.
Yep. So so we've got a chair's proposal on the table, can we vote on it, Chair?
Yeah, just the cats are back.
Say, um isn't that something councillors could use their allowance to put towards?
They can.
Lords.
Yeah, they can, yeah.
Because sometimes it's difficult to.
Do you want me to read out your proposal?
I'll get Ailee to read proposal out.
Okay, so this is a.
Members.
This is an en masse proposal. So for Newington Community Association, two thousand pounds, Great uh Bucket and Spade Run, two thousand pounds, Town Carnival, two thousand, Open Balls Tournament, seven fifty, seven hundred and fifty, sorry, um the Festival of Sound, two thousand and the um Rotary Senate uh for their arts festival, specifically Ramsgate School Element, five hundred pounds. Also with a caveat that um RTC offer, offer assistance to the Festival of Sound, St George's Church and the Town Carnival um in the form of help with um things that they might need, technicians, maybe Radford House and that sort of thing. I think that's right.
Council agree.
I propose an amendment, Chair.
If you want it.
Change the amount for the Festival of Sound to five thousand.
Uh well, I'm not going to accept that amendment, so um.
Second that.
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not taking it as a, as an amendment, you'll have to vote for that separately, you'll have to turn, turn the vote now.
Thank you, Jen.
Could you say this, Chair?
Huh?
It's an amendment, I'm proposing amendment, you can vote against.
Well, we vote, we'll vote for the amendment, yes, we'll vote for the amendment first.
I was just asking for a clarification, please, Chair. I thought the original idea was two thousand for those that had requested that or more and the agreed amount, for example, the seven hundred and fifty and the five hundred for those that had required less.
Yeah.
So that would seem to me that a Ministry of Sound application of five thousand doesn't fit with that proposal. It might need to be a second proposal.
Council agrees to put that in as an amendment, but it's up to you.
Rather than an amendment to this proposal.
You've got to vote on it.
Councillors, the um proposal on the table is as listed, those, you you haven't got a proposal on the table to do a broad two thousand, you've actually got a proposal on the table saying two thousand, two thousand, two thousand, seven fifty, two thousand five hundred and then the caveat. So you haven't got this broad two thousand only. Uh that is not the proposal at the moment.
No, so we've got an amendment, we've got an amendment proposed and an amendment seconded. So anybody want to speak on the amendment?
I wanted to ask a procedural question. Um would we vote on your proposal as the first proposal on the table?
No, you deal with the amendment first.
I'm gonna deal with the amendment first.
You'd always deal with the amendment first.
Different organizations do it differently.
Yeah, well, no, that's the way I would do it.
Is to change um the award to uh the Festival of Sound from two thousand to five.
Hey, members, you understand what you're voting for?
We speak to that, Chair.
Your amendment.
My reason for doing that is because it's a major event.
Yeah.
It 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 promotes Ramsgate to the outside world, it's not just important though it is to provide things for town folk waiting for town council. They still want to promote Ramsgate and this is one way of doing that. Therefore, I think um considering that it is sixty five thousand pounds, I think we're justified in giving this five thousand.
Uh it's over, it's over number, I I mean, the reason I've supported councillor Green's amendment is it's over a number of days. Uh I know there's masses of preparation leading up to it, it always attracts a big player, a big entrant to the town and it also happens over a range of locations, so it's not just stuffed in one place. Uh so that's why I, so it hits a, it hits lots of people in different areas.
Tom, we have the amendment, members? We have, we have the amendment and um so all those in favour of the amendment to be added to the to the extensive proposal, all those in favour, please? One, two.
Can I propose an amendment? No. No.
Four, five, those against? That's lost. Thank you. Uh right, the substantive uh pro- proposal is as was read out by the Deputy Town Clerk. So all those in favour, please show. Six, seven, eight, those against? One, two, two against. Okay, thank you, that's carried.
Thank you, members. Got one more.
However. No, where, where is there one more?
It's not events.
Oh, okay. Sorry, guys, I thought that was that.
One more application, this is to the um Community Services. Um this is from the Friends of Ellington Park Cafe Limited. Asking for one thousand five hundred and ten ninety five. The application is for funding towards a warm space and breakfast in the park. The applicant states, each Monday morning since fourteenth of November, three volunteers have been operating warm space and breakfast in the cafe. A member of paid staff is with them for their security and to meet our insurance requirements. Attendees are offered free breakfast, hot drinks, um and and she lists uh what they are. Uh between thirty and fifty people have attended each week. It's very popular, especially as isolated people get the opportunity to socialize whilst keeping warm and cozy. Several of our guests use our facilities to wash, et cetera. Thank you. So they are requesting from the Community Services Budget, um which is the one that you've actually used uh for CAB. Um and there is money there. Um they're asking for one thousand five hundred and ten ninety five, thank you.
Members.
The person accepting, yeah.
Seconded. Were those in favour? Carried, thank you.
Can I ask Chair through you, is this?
It's the new, new budget, which you've already spent some out of, who seconded that?
Uh who seconded that, sorry?
Trish proposed it, who seconded it? Thank you.
Right, okay. Right, members, um next item is the one that we've, we've moved forward. Um and that is uh was previously item ten, which is the uh East Cliff Lift. And that's to receive uh formal, um sorry, formal, that's to receive verbal report from me on the current situation. Um I'd asked for um an updated cost of repairs and replacement to machinery within the lift structure. Um that's come out at uh fifty
Seven pounds.
Fifty seven.
Forty seven pounds.
Seven, yeah, I got something like that. Very much. Um just to say as well that that I've um also been in a conversation with the leader of the council, the Thanet District Council, who has uh very recently confirmed to me um that the fifty thousand pounds that they were going to give will still be given. Um there is a slight sticking point in relation to the concession. I'm not sure whether the um concession would actually come with it. Um there's uh an issue of uh council finances in relation to the um into the money that's generated by by that. However, what I would say is, um I don't think that that is a sticking point uh should we wish to take the lift on. Uh the lift structure in itself appears to be sound. Um so uh in order, so what I'm going to propose to you um for you to discuss is that Ramsgate Town Council um takes the lift on with the fifty thousand pound from uh Thanet District Council. Um but also to be mindful that it's likely that Ramsgate Town Council would need to provide a further fifty thousand pound for whatever is 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 necessary, because originally, um I think I were overest- estimated of the cost of repairs to to the lift, et cetera, um of being about a hundred and twenty thousand. Um but that's uh, that's as far as, that's as far as I've got at the moment. I have to say that the leader of the council uh is wishing this to be resolved. Um and I'm not saying this to you because the leader of the council wants it resolved at all, because this is an RTC decision. Um but what I am concerned about is that should we decide later on to take the lift on, that the fifty thousand pound from uh TDC will not be there. So it's entirely up to to you to discuss, uh talk about and to see whether that's we're prudent in taking it on, uh whether we should take it on or if you don't want to take it on. And I think the time's right now for us to decide on that, it's been hanging about for a long while. So um I've got at uh councillor Nixie, councillor Green, councillor Heatherington, councillor Young, councillor Wing.
Go around the table. Now, so I was gonna say, shall we just work?
Shall we just work it by round and if you have a say? Castle Nix.
Right, I'm all for taking on the fifty thousand. With regard to the other fifty thousand, I mean, I don't know how this works at the council, but something like a, a, like a fundraiser or some public acknowledgement and and to bring the community together to to bring something like that back, is that out of the question for the council to set up? Because I think if we did that with the idea that people were taking ownership of the lift, then again, it's good marketing. You know, it lets people know that it's open again and we are showing that we are trying to look after Ramsgate almost like without TDC, I don't want to sort of like, you know, show them up, but it would definitely.
Think that's.
Conster our.
Damn fine idea.
So I mean, why can't we crowd fund?
We can.
There you go, right.
That's a great.
There's two aspects to this, isn't there? There's, there's the capital amount that we need to get the lift working again. Um on that, could I, could I ask the situation in the terms of legal fees for the transfer?
My view.
Will the council pay that?
My view, the, 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 the transfer comes uh with no cost.
That's your view or?
No, that's, that's what I'm being told by the leader of the council, that it comes with no cost to Ramsgate Town Council.
Look clearly, look at the camera.
Comes with no cost.
That's a change of attitude.
Yeah, Newington.
They want rid of it.
Yeah, of course they do. The other aspect is, and the reason they want rid of it, is the ongoing maintenance costs. Including, I would guess. Um now that's where the, the. Um now that's where the, the, that's where I propose that, that the concession would, would help the council
Yeah.
Um do that and my view is that we should stick out from the, if, if T D C want rid of it badly enough, they'll allow us the concession.
Okay, let's, I'll put councillor Heatherington.
Uh two points about the fifty thousand, that's been answered. I'm very keen on what councillor Nixie said, totally agree with that. And I just thought, and I don't want to keep repeating because we're going around saying the same thing, I thought that the Ramsgate Sand Development had shown some interest in
The Ramsgate?
Sands Development, is it? It had shown some
Um yes.
One point interest in some
That is true, and what I can advise of that is, um I've had discussions with uh with the company. Um they were anxious to put money in at start, unfortunately. Um they've been told that they can't get their, uh what shall I say? They can't get the money that they desire, they've been told, until they complete the development, which includes the hotel.
No.
And is that what is happening with the hotel?
Uh that will be built.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, we just had a hand.
I mean, I think we've got the same issue as we had with the event funding, that I don't think we can make a decision because a new council is arriving and I'm sure we all want to be re-elected, but we may not be re-elected. Uh so I
I interject the councillor.
Let me finish what I'm going to say first of all. I also think, you know, it is very surprising that T D C doesn't want to uh charge legal fees, and if it's too good to be true, it probably is, especially with the case with T D C. I'm with councillor Green. I think we should be saying, keep the fifty thousand, we're after con- concession, because I'd like also to see uh a modelling of fu- future liability and risk and how we're gonna run it day to day. Who's gonna open it up? Who's gonna shut it down? What happens if it breaks down? Uh again, I, I'm all for taking it on board, but I just need a bit more information about future liability. Uh does it need uh, 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 I, I don't know about lifts, I can't need a service every year, does the lift need a service every year?
I just, it's, it's what I wanted to, to ject with is that um part of the, part of the
Document.
Extra cost of part of the document is a service for a year. Um there's, there's uh two types of uh service. Um sorry, three. One costing, uh two costing, one costing seven hundred and fifty a year plus V A T, and one costing nine hundred and eighty, which is uh more com- more comprehensive. Uh the response to time to attend a trap is two hours and a breakdown is four hours. So there is, from the lift engineers, from the lift engineer, well, you've called a fire brigade anyway, um if, if someone's stuck in there. So um I, I, I don't particularly have a problem with that. If we leave it until after, um the new council is elected, uh the fifty thousand pound will disappear before the new council comes in.
I mean, for me, the concession is, is a vital piece of that whole thing.
I'd just say, though, i- i- it is, we would like to have it, we would, that, that's the ultimate that we would, that we would want. But we did not originally, when the whole discussion was taking place, we were looking at taking the lift on and and fortunately, I mean, coun- councillor Green come up with that, with that idea. Um but what I'm saying, if they don't give us the concession, are you gonna say that we don't want the lift? Is that what you're saying?
For me, there's, there's, there's not enough. I mean, you've said we've got insurance costs, you know, it's a bit like the insurance you take out on your washing machine and it breaks down and suddenly your, your parts are massively expensive. I don't know enough about lifts and I'm, you know, if this was the start of our four years of a new, of a new council, then I'd say, yeah, let, let's take it. Let's, I still think we should give them the fifty thousand back and let's have the concession.
We haven't got fifty thousand, we don't give
No, we, we don't take the fifty thousand. They're just, I, I, you know, I don't want to leave possibly the next council with uh and I can't believe T D C are not gonna make us pay legal fees, I have to say, so I don't know. Although I would love to see the lift working, I'd love to see the one on the other cliff working, I that day to day running, who's gonna, who's gonna open it up? Who's gonna shut it down if we
The concession.
The concession due already?
Yeah.
Instead you do that?
That's why I suggested
Yeah, and we could get an income from it. So I'm still working on that.
Yeah.
But it's still the fact, do you wanna take the lift on?
Yeah.
One way or the other, so councillor Young, do you?
That was my query as well, as to who was gonna be the minders for the lift? Because we do have a lot of vandalism, don't we? We've had the roof split off the lift. At least there were, you know, what sort of security would we have to put in place?
Well, I think we'll have a seagull with a I mean, that's, 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 that's life, councillor Young, you know, there is no security at all, you can't, because you can't have twenty four hour, you know, so, but uh, you know, so it, it's something, whenever you take anything on
Yes.
is gonna be an issue, it's gonna be a problem. That's why you have insurance.
Yes.
Councillor Piper, did you wanna say?
Uh thank you, Chair. I, I just think it, the maintenance of the lift would not be kind of good value for money for the residents of, uh of Ramsgate. Um in an ideal world, yes, let's have the lifts open, but in reality, I think it will be a money pit.
Thank you. Councillor Piper, did you wanna say anything? No?
I bring nothing to the table on this.
Thank you. Councillor Mackey, sir. Thank you, sir.
Oh, I'm just gonna say the ongoing maintenance costs.
Okay. Councillor Crittenden?
I think firstly, I'd like to comment on um the, the no cost bit because uh I had a conversation with the current interim director of property, who has been around for longer than any of the predecessors so far.
Bit of a, bit of a late cost moment, doesn't it?
And uh his comment to me in, in, at that time was definitely, I got the feeling from him that actually he was prepared to do what was needed to offload stuff for free at no cost. So I, I think that is possible, but obviously that's something that we need some reassurance on. I think we've been discussing this lift for so long and we've, we've had this sense of wanting to take this lift on for so long. Um it's, we are in a difficult position, we are at the end of a council, we are going to a new council, we do have fifty grand on the table at the moment. We will lose it if we don't take this opportunity now. Um but we have been discussing this for a long time. We've had many papers before us um about the pros and cons of it. We do need um a business plan to be in place very quickly. Um I, you know, it's something that the residents have been, and, and not ju- I mean, obviously it, the, the lift itself is in East Cliff Ward. Um but residents, not just from East Cliff Ward, but from um all of those around the, that particular area um are supportive of us taking it on. I think I'm just gonna stop there. I mean, it's, it's diffi- it, it
Seize the day.
Okay. Councillor
I think that's where I'm at. You know, we've, we've been just
Good to hear more, good to hear more, members, catch up.
Oh, sure. Yeah, just to say, well, obviously I've got an interest in this because I'm an East Cliff councillor. So obviously I'm gonna say yes, take the fifty grand, let's get it open as soon as possible.
Yes.
Uh yes, as everyone said, there's lots of issues, but it's been closed for two years. Insurance on the new roof, the um lead that was nicked off the roof originally, the insurance covered it for the replacement.
Hmm.
And that was covered by T D C. So I think we need to bite the bullet.
Councillor Mortis, you wanna?
Uh
Anything?
This has been going on for such a long time because I, I think, thinking back, when the first one, the first planning went in for the hotel, the hotel was going to have a lift from the Clifton, from Wellington Crescent, down to the bottom. That would solve everything, but I don't suppose it will. That
That was, that was the other cliff. It wasn't the hotel.
There.
It was the, it was
It was this one.
No, no.
I think it was.
Originally.
Because it was from Wellington Crescent, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Down.
Okay, the council will finish.
But I think uh you could take the money and then find a time the hotels built, be able to get some money from them. Maybe.
Okay. Councillor Ralston?
Uh yeah, I've got health and safety concerns. Uh because at railway station, we had three lifts. I mean, we were manned twenty four seven at the station. And we were forever getting children with their arms and limbs, sort of trapped in the doors. Now, I don't know if, if the lift will be manned or anything like that, but I tell you something, getting a child's arm out of a trap door is not a pretty sight. But that's why I'm concerned, health and safety.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Austin?
Um I'm with you, I think, Chair. I think we should seize the day. Um I realise that there are risks, but I think we've differed about this long enough.
Yep.
Uh I think we owe it to our residents to offer that, to offer access to the seafront for people up, up there. I'm speaking with a certain amount of self-interest as a, a East Cliff resident with a very much older partner who is finding it increasingly difficult to get up the, the hill. Um so um, so I think we should seize the day. I, I wanted to add with my hat on as part of the working group on T D C working more effectively with town and parish councils, that most of the evidence we took was pretty much similar from all different parties. But one issue that came up was how aggrieved town and parish councils like ourselves were about T D C's attempts to offload things and charge legal fees. It was a real uh, uh cause of annoyance and our recommendation, which was received reasonably well by cabinet, was that, that that should be looked at very closely and only in exceptional circumstances should there be consideration that legal fees would be passed on to anybody who was good enough to take on an asset that T D C wanted to offload.
Okay. Members, anybody else wanna say anything further?
Proposals, yeah.
Oh, the, the proposal is that uh we take on lift uh from T D C, uh with the fifty thousand pound given from T D C and without cost.
And we carry on pushing for
And carry on pushing for the concession. Okay.
Chair, I'd like to propose an amendment.
Do your amendments, go on.
Mr Amendment this evening.
Amendment, please. That we do launch a crowdfunder. Yes. To play the cost.
Yep.
And that we do insist on the concession as part of the deal.
Well, I can insist, um but
Otherwise, we don't go ahead.
You wanna do that, members?
No, can I? No, disagree. I think if, if we, if we insist on the concession, we actually take ourselves entirely back to where we were before. We make it conditional, we'll be back in next month, we'll be having the same debate and it'll be going over and over again. This is what has partly has what's held this up for so long over the last cou- couple of years.
Yeah, it's been proposed and seconded, that unless we get the um concession, then we say that we don't want the lift.
Members, the actual amendment is, uh the, uh council launches a crowdfunder. I need to check that that is actually legally allowed. I don't know.
Okay.
We can, we accept that and to insist on the concession as part of the deal. So
And, and if, and if the, if the concession is not forthcoming, that we don't go ahead with the lift.
Well, I gotta say that, I mean, otherwise we won't get
Otherwise, projects negotiated.
Okay.
That is your amendment.
The comment, it's a bit of a dangerous game we're playing here.
Exactly. It was with Ramsgate.
The vote against
I've been a councillor in Ramsgate. You know, we've had opportunities to grasp the nettle and do things and we said, ooh, let's wait a bit, let's wait a bit.
Yeah, uh thank you, thank you, thank you, members.
We're gonna give the fifty grand if we do that.
Thank you, members. We've got an amendment. Let's vote on that amendment. All in favour of the amendment, please show. Five, those against? One, two, three, four, six, seven. That's lost, amendment is lost.
Can I propose one?
Yes, you can propose.
That we go forward with the crowdfunder regardless.
Okay. Provided it's legal.
Of course.
I, I just need, I just need to check because I've not heard of a council.
We'll do it anyway. But um
Yeah.
And, and, and wish as hard as we can for the
Yes.
With, with the case of this, this would allow us to keep it without T D C ever having to deal with it again.
Is there a, do I have a second on that, please?
Yes.
There's a second.
Councillor Green, say.
I'll ask a question.
Yes.
Can somebody tell us what the annual running cost will be?
Uh, I can't, I can't tell you what that is.
We need a business plan, yeah. So once this amendment's been voted on, can I propose another one?
We need to take the amendment first and then have you to come in with another one.
Member, members, your amendment is that we go forward with crowdfunding and uh push as hard as possible for the concession because that part is already in the main.
Yeah, in that case, just crowdfunding.
So the amendment is uh to put, to go forward with crowdfunding as long as I find out that's okay. Thank you.
Okay, members? Been proposed and seconded, all in favour, please show. Six, seven, eight, those against? One, two, three. So that's carried. Councillor Wing, you wanted another amendment?
Don't think I voted on that amendment because
No, I didn't. I'm on the amendment.
That's okay.
There were two, there were at least two.
So, I, I mean, is, so my amendment would be, and I'm, I'm not quite sure, is that, is that we seek to set up uh an East Cliff list, lift trust. So that the lift goes into a charitable trust, which then means that we can access grant for crowdfunding to help us with the running costs and the uh anything, any future work that needs doing. Uh there are a lot of public buildings that sit in, within a council.
The decision in amendment, you're, you're going on, we're just
I'm trying, I'm trying to
We need to do that after if we get it.
No, because whether this, I, my vote will depend on whether this comes through because it's a way I'm trying to deal with uh future running costs.
We can't put
If we don't get the
That's, that's, that is something, I think, as councillor Nixie said, that if the count, if R T C take the lift on, then that's something for Ramsgate Town Council to look at.
I'm proposing an amendment and I think you have to accept my amendment and it has to be voted on.
I, I don't think the amendment is
My amendment is that we should, we would seek, that we would seek
Hang on a minute, the, the councillor.
I'm trying to get the wording right, which is what you allow other people who've got an amendment.
I've just said, absolutely, to carry on.
I think we need to set up some sort of charitable trust uh that helps us with future liabilities and, and keeps the, keep, will keep the lift in the, in the uh the manner it should be kept and run.
Okay. Is there a second for that? Uh sorry, I need a second for, no, I need a second of first, please. Is there a second of it, councillor Piper?
Can I speak to it as well, please?
Yeah, if you're seconding it, yes.
I'll second, oh, second. Um I didn't vote on the previous amendment, not because I don't want to do anything about the lift, but I'm just not quite sure how we can start a crowdfunder before we vote on the lift. I'm not quite sure, that seems to be put in the cart before the horse, to me, just a little bit. Um whereas this amendment from councillor Wing, I think is an absolutely brilliant idea. But again, I'm not quite sure how we can do that until we've got the lift.
Right.
So again, it's not the cart before the horse. Um there must be a way through and I think setting up a, a, a trust organisation and then going back to T D C with our details of we'll take this to that, 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 and that seems to be the way to do it. It does to me, it's anyway.
Okay, we got uh councillor Crittenden?
I, I only wanted to um double check on the legality, um and that uh if we are the owners of the lift, then we can set up a trust, would be my understanding, and I just wanted to clarify.
That would be my understanding.
That would be
That would be my
The situation.
Yeah, that's
Good idea.
There is, there is a Ramsgate Property Trust already in existence. It's the one that we allowed to take over the tunnels, run through the tunnels. I mean, their, their rationale for existence is just this sort of thing, and then they decided to take it on.
Okay, I, I, I am, I have to say that I do agree with councillor Piper, that we are seen to be putting a cart before the bleeding horse. Uh we, we, we gotta get a horse before you can put a cart to it. So um, you know, I think we're going a bit above ourselves here, but councillor But, um, you know, I think we're going a bit above ourselves here, but Councillor Crittenden?
I just ask, would it be acceptable to, for it, the wording to be, to investigate the setting up of a trust?
It, it, I'm, but I've put this motion forward so that I can vote
Yeah.
in a positive way over lift.
But rather than saying we will set up a trust, we will investigate.
Investigatively investigate.
Yeah.
And it is a waste
And then I'm, I'm, I'm with you completely.
The money as well, I mean, that's basically where I was going with the, with the crowdfunding aspect, obviously.
Yeah. Okay, we've got an, we've got an amendment there.
Yeah, yeah.
An amendment there.
Yeah.
Can I, so you know what the amendment is?
Investigate.
Investigate, setting up a trust.
Investigate a charitable trust, okay, all those in favour of that, please show. Oh, that's carried, okay. So now we go back to, does anyone else want to do an amendment? Be nice to get home sometime. Um, so, uh, the substantive motion.
What was that? Finally.
Yeah.
Yes.
Chair, can you read it out?
Yeah, substantive motion, please.
Um, Ramsgate Town Council takes on the lift with the fifty thousand from TDC um, without cost and to push for the concession.
So that is now added with the crowdfunder and
Crowdfunder and to investigate setting up an East Cliff Lift Trust of some description.
Yeah, okay. You all know what the, you know what, what you're voting on?
Yeah, I've got it, I'm, I'm okay.
Those in favour, please show.
I'm voting favour now, see, see, and so can I be. Costs, thank you Becky.
There's a solution.
Those against?
I can't vote without knowing how much it's going to cost to have education.
That's the director.
That's carried.
That's the chair of finance.
Thank you. Right.
Just going to propose we put gold into my card.
You'll be pleased to hear you've only got three more items, members. Next item is the finance, uh, finance and budget, members, please, can we just get on with this, please?
Um, before you have a list of, um, payments that the town clerk is able to authorize, um, which in this case was myself in her absence, uh, everything under a thousand pounds. Um, I'd like you to note that, please, and the other part is everything above a thousand pound, I need you to approve. Okay.
Those were approved and note as proper.
Seconda?
Yeah.
Those in favour, please show, thank you. Nicely done. Um, item eleven is the Kent County Council Consultation Document. Have I missed one?
You're off.
Sorry, I've missed, I've, I've missed Councillor Avonden.
I've got variation. Councillor Avonden.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong one.
Yeah.
Right, I will, I will be quick on this, uh, you had a reason why I wrote the report.
Oh, yes.
Trust in the active Ramsgate, I think it's going to include foraging and fossil collecting. And I was actually following up something through on this and I got hit by this email from the council officer that when I got it, I had to check favour in the first paper.
Was that funny, was it?
Yeah, it was that funny, yeah. So I just asked the report to be noted.
Okay, members.
Thank you.
Sir Rammer's report. Yeah, it's to be noted, um, all in favour, please show, that noted.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Councillor Avonden, for that. Last one, Kent County Council Consultation, which is this large document. Uh, and it's a, a community service consultation. I think Councillor Green, you wanted, Councillor Green's got, and Councillor Austin, you've got some views. So over to you, Councillor.
What, what do you think?
This is a
Quiet, please.
Clearly designed consultation documents from KCC, which in effect is cover for a number, for a large number of closures of, um, children's centres, et cetera, across the county. But in particular, our interest is in Thanet. Our particular interest is in the prairie one.
Prairie, yeah.
Which is a highly successful, um, centre in, in, in community centre in the town. It contains the early years, um, plenty of early years nursery. Which currently is full to capacity with children on the highly successful. Now, I have a number of, um, I wrote to KCC pointing out to them that the consultation meetings that they held for Thanet were both bargain, nothing in Ramsgate.
That's a surprise.
And could they provide one for Ramsgate offering, uh, either, either here or Bradford House? They refused.
I refused.
They refused. Now, for me, this the point is that KCC are saying that, that they're doing this to save money, basically. The point is with the, the money that the, um, the nursery pays them, keeping this building running cannot really cost them an awful, an awful amount. And bear in mind that they've just given themselves a four point five percent rise in the cost allowance.
Yeah.
Amounting to thirty-six thousand pounds a year.
Yeah.
And the total allowances they pay out is one point six million pounds a year. I think, I think they can certainly afford to, um, keep this building going. I think it's cost, incidentally, is, um, council tax, which eighty percent of which goes to KCC anyway. So it doesn't make sense economically. They're talking about some sort of, um, drop in centre which, to me, makes things even worse because it's, it's a beautiful building. Uh, ideal for what it's useful and the two proposed uses just, just won't make a mark. So what I'm proposing is that this council protests in the most strong
I agree.
Yep.
Totally agree.
Yep.
Councillor Austin?
Um, I would like to, uh, second what Councillor Green said, we're very concerned as for the councillors' report about the post-closure. Uh, we think that the idea of moving services to library is totally inappropriate. There are services you can move to library, for example, I noticed in the consultation, there's a lot of emphasis on adult education and skills provision, that would be regretted in library, but we don't have any KCC funded adult education and skill provision in Ramsgate at all unless you're unemployed.
Yeah.
So it is a bit of a laugh to be asked what we'd like to do with ours because we ain't got it. Um, but that, that might work well in a library, a children's centre does not, we need it to stay where it is and Councillor Green's point about the, the relative cost is, is well made. Uh, can I suggest that as well as objecting in the strongest terms as a council, we encourage members to respond individually and we encourage members to sign a petition, which has been set up by the nursery head.
I agree with that.
Petition be circulated, please.
Certainly.
Councillor Huxley, you had, sorry, David.
We use our channels to
Whatever other channels.
Councillor Huxley?
I like statistics, Chair. Because I'm a trainspotter. Um, Thanet has a high rate of digital exclusion, thirty-five percent. Meaning even areas with good broadband have residents that don't have the skills and devices to access them. Number two, in two thousand eighteen nineteen academic year, fifty-four percent of Thanet pupils have achieved a standard passing mass in English and British. Compared to six, six percent in the rest of says it all.
Says it all, yeah.
Putting money in through Thanet and taking it away.
Absolutely.
Thanks for that, oh, that's really good, that's really good. Um, how do you want to go about this, members? Do you, David, I mean, do you want to write on behalf of the council, seeing as you wrote that up, or do you want? Uh, or should we do it through the town clerk or how, how do you see this going?
We should do it through the town clerk, but I'm happy to do a draft.
Okay, thank you. I think that'd be good and then we can do it through, do it through there and fully, uh, fully support that we, that we all individually do it. What about our county councillors? That we need to, we need to contact, we need both of them to be on side.
Yep.
They're both on record opposing.
Oh, good, 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 okay, that's, that's not going anywhere, is it? No.
Is it, is it something we can gear up on our own websites, our own Ramsgate Town Council website, so that we actively promote? As a town council, we are against this, so we probably use, uh, Councillor
Yeah, I'm sure we can, I'm sure
Make sure we push it.
I'm sure we can get that to go on.
Can I just clarify that you, you require a letter to go to KCC as opposed to completing consultation? Which has got an awful lot of questions in it about who you are and what you are individually.
Complete the consultation, which is to get the last
Yes, send a letter, but encourage members to go then whichever bits of the consultation we feel are appropriate, which doesn't have to be
It needs to go to the leader of Kent County Council and, and whoever the cabinet member is for, for education.
Yes.
Yes.
And as Councillor Green says, we should use our own channel, political and otherwise to, yeah.
So, um, we have that proposed and seconded. Um, all in favour, please? Thank you, that's it. Um, uh, date, the time for the next meeting is Wednesday, the twenty ninth of March. Daughter's birthday, I'm sure I'll be here, but it could be in probably Liverpool. Anyway, thank you, members, for that and thank you, members of the public who fought with us through this long meeting.